Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is 5:30, and I will call this regular meeting of the Burnsville City Council to order. It is our tradition to stand for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, and we invite you to join us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tonight's meeting is being conducted both in person and virtually. Our city council members and our staff is in the chambers. Members of the public may attend in person, or the public can also watch this meeting online at burnsvillemn.gov/meetings, or Comcast channel 16 or 859. The public can also participate through Zoom by joining us at zoom.us/join. And more information is available on our meeting webpage and in the council agenda packet. The first item on our agenda is announcements and of our upcoming meetings. Regular council meetings are scheduled for Tuesday, January 4th at 5:30 p.m. and Tuesday, January 18th at 5:30 p.m. We have a work session scheduled for Tuesday, January 11th at 5:30 p.m. And an all-day work session scheduled for Monday, January 24th at 9:00 a.m. All meetings of the city council are held here in the chambers. The all-day work session is going to be held at our new Fire Station 1, and that, and in one of the conference rooms. The next item on the agenda is citizens' comments. This is the opportunity for anyone in the audience to address the council on an item that is not on the printed agenda, not in application form that will be coming before us at a future date. Is there anyone who wishes to address the council? Anyone who wishes to address the council? Ms. Anderson, is there anyone in queue?
No, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Item three is additions to the final agenda, and this is for emergency items only. City Manager Lee, are there any emergency items to be added to the agenda?
No, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Members of the council? Okay. Then we move to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a group of items that's considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. However, an item on the consent agenda can be removed for a separate discussion and vote. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes an item on the consent agenda to be removed for a separate discussion and vote? City Manager Lee?
No, Madam Mayor.
Members of the council? May I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda, please?
Move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. And a motion carries. Thank you. We're now at the regular agenda. And the first item on the irregular agenda is item 5A. And this is an application for La 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 LLC for an interim use permit to allow one-year extension for rebuilding, removal, and soil compact at 771 Lady Bird Lane to December 31st, 2022. And we are asked to approve the IUP and to adopt the findings of fact. And presenting this evening is our city planner, Deb Garros. Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. The application is before you this evening because there was a split vote by the Planning Commission. They held a public hearing last week on Monday night, on the 13th, and they had recommended approval four to one. Council member, or excuse me, Commissioner John dissented from that, and he didn't really indicate particular reasons, just that he thought that this is something that should come up for discussion before council. I believe that kind of the concern is that this is a project that's been going on for quite some time, and just wanted to make sure that this is something council is comfortable with. Just very quickly, the property is one of two lots owned by the applicant. We're looking at 771 Lady Bird Lane, and that's where the existing building is. That building was constructed in 1963. This property and the property to the north are part of previous interim use permits, and then also a court settlement agreement between the city and the property owner that was done in 2017. So basically, what we have is until December 31st, 2022, both lots are to have the soil removal and remediation completed, so that would be next year. The building removal on the subject site, and then also soil compaction for the building pad, was to be completed by this year, December 31st. The applicant's requesting an extension to next year, stating that they've had issues, like everyone else, I think, with the pandemic and getting supplies and workers involved to the site. And then in 2024, which is the last end date as part of the settlement agreement, and IUP is granted, is that the wholesale landscape supply business then would end as of that date. So this just shows the existing building, and they have done everything that they are supposed to do, with the exception of this extension they're requesting, and they've submitted their annual progress reports on the mining operation as well, and are in We did submit the application to MINDOT for their review, and they have no comments. The lower Minnesota watershed district also did not provide any comments back. So the recommendation from the Planning Commission is to approve the IUP, which basically grants a one-year extension for removal of the building, and that's like compaction for a building pad, subject to condition number one. And those are the specific two conditions that they're requesting be extended for a year. With that, I can stand for questions.
Ms. Garros, have you been satisfied with the reports coming in?
Yes, Mayor.
So are they doing that on a, twice a year to give you a report, or is it just on an annual basis? And I'm just wondering if we should have them report as to their progress six months in, so that we know that when December 31st, 2022 arrives, that they meet and are complied with it?
Certainly. They have provided the reports. They've had soils engineers go out and do the reports. They're supposed to remove, I believe, around 11,000 square feet or cubic yards of material a year. So they have met all of those conditions. They've installed the two hard-surface driveways to the building, et cetera. So we believe that the application is something that makes sense and is reasonable. If council would like to have an earlier check-in, we can certainly do that.
I think an early check-in helps to make us aware of their progress, and so that by December 31st, they are in compliance, and we can move on. Members of the council, that's my suggestion, is that we approve with the condition with a six-month check-in.
I'll have a problem with that.
Yeah, seems fair. We might be looking at another extension a year from now. Unless there's really anything major going on, it's really no pressure for them to...
Yeah. What, did you want to have a, because, you know, I understand the pandemic.
Right, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. And so, you know, to give them the extension, we're all working in good faith, and this will just help them. And did you want something else, Councilmember Keely?
No, I just, it's been...
Because it's been going on, yes. You and I have been sitting at...
There's, there's no compelling reason yet for them to do what we're asking them to do, and so the extensions are becoming an annual, you know, exercise. And I don't have a problem with it, because I don't believe we should be forcing them to do anything before there's really a major redevelopment trigger that would necessitate it.
Well, I think there is with the Asilford property that has already been, and this is adjacent to, that adds more acreage.
There, you know, as the property owner, if there is a reason for them to participate in that, or there's another interest in their property, then they'll, they'll vacate as soon as they get a deal on the table, before maybe the, this extension or the next extension. You know, I think it's triggered by the private activity of the business.
Yeah. Because my sense is that the gentleman who is building on the Asilford property is really interested in more land in that area, because he wants to add more product. So that's what I'm thinking about, is that if they're, and this is adjacent to that. So, okay, so, members of the council, so approve with the condition that they have a six-month check-in with staff.
I would.
Yeah. Motion to approve is, oh, sorry. Go to...
Councilmember Workman makes the motion.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Schultz. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. And a motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item is Experience Burnsville's presentation of their strategic marketing plan and budget. Presenting is Executive Director for Experience Burnsville, Amy Burl. Welcome. And I'm glad you're feeling much better.
Yes, thank you so much for your patience in rescheduling the meeting. This evening, I'll be providing an overview of our 2022 marketing plan, our strategic plan, and our budget, all of which has been reviewed by our Board of Directors and has been approved.
And we have read it twice.
Yes.
And this is the third reading.
So you probably have it memorized now, so you could do the presentation for me.
Absolutely giving the presentation.
So I'll just give an overview of who we are as an organization, our objectives and strategies, marketing of the destination, an overview of our budget, and then I'll be available for questions. Who are, who we are? We are Experience Burnsville, the Convention and Visitors Bureau for the city of Burnsville. We're a 501(c)(6) not-for-profit corporation, and we were founded in 1987. Our mission is to enhance the community by increasing the volume of spending of visitors through our promotion, marketing, and advocating for destination developments. Our vision is we'll be a vibrant destination of choice in the Twin Cities area, featuring unique and quality experiences through a mix of attractions, cultures, dining, shopping, and recreation. We are governed by a Board of Directors, and I wanted to point out a couple of our Board of Directors. We have Vice Chairperson Skip Neenhouse, a familiar face here with us this evening, and then from the city of Burnsville, Carissa Larson. And then Councilmember Dan Gustafson represents us as a council member. And we have one staff person, and that is myself. So we, our Board of Directors met in late September and reviewed our objectives and our strategies for 2022, and we narrowed everything down a little bit. We really are focusing on marketing of the destination and promotion to really drive visitorship, because that is what our hotels and our hospitality partners are really needing. And with our budget, with the impact that we've had with COVID-19, we're still down about 30% from where we were in 2019. So hence the one-person staff, and we're going to be outsourcing some of our marketing strategies to one of our preferred vendors. So our objectives for 2022 is that we will promote Burnsville as a year-round destination, and we'll continue to emphasize on our shoulder season, which is October through March, when travel to the Midwest decreases a bit, but we have so many great amenities, Buck Hill, our close proximity to the Minneapolis-St. Paul and the Ames Center, that people can either enjoy the outdoors, or they can stay warm and toasty at the Ames Center. Our third objective, I put one and two together. Our third objective is destination management. So we will continue to represent Burnsville with different tourism organizations and events, and will support any enhancements to the community that impact hospitality and tourism. We are the storytellers of Burnsville, you know, what really differentiates us from our neighboring cities when it comes to visitorship, and also to our residents. You know, we want people to live here and love living here, and move their business here, so we want to share the stories of the small entrepreneurs and businesses that really make Burnsville a unique place to not only visit, but to live and to work here. And then we want to maintain our organizational capacity. That's really important when you're a small organization like we are, and we're funded through, primarily through lodging tax. We want to preserve our reserve funds, maintain our office space, which is important. Even as one person, it's great to have that community engagement that we do have with officing out of the Ames Center, so thank you for extending our lease through 2022. Our marketing initiatives. Before I go into that, I did just receive some information from 26 Digital. They're one of our preferred vendors that help us a lot with our marketing initiatives. And we just received some information on our content activation programs that we've run to date in 2021. And I just wanted to share that we spent a little over $11,000 on our activation programs. So those are blogs that we have on our website, and then we do Facebook ads to promote and drive traffic to our website. Our click-through rate was 1.74%, where the global average is 0.9%. So we did significantly better than the global average. The cost per link click for us is 43 cents; global average is 63 cents. And our total clicks, likes, comments, shares, all surpassed, our total engagements all surpassed 53,000. And that was an average of 21 cents per engagement. So those are really good numbers for the amount of funds that we have to invest in our marketing campaigns to promote Burnsville. And our Google Analytics, and I'm really proud of these statistics.
Is that on all channels that you just gave us?
So our content activation program, our Facebook ads that we do that are very targeted. So those were our Facebook programs that we ran with 26 Digital. They manage that part for us. So they're our media, sort of our advertising agency, if you will.
Yeah, because you also are very active on Instagram and active on Twitter.
Yep, and that, yep. Instagram and Facebook are primary social media channels. We've put a pause to Twitter. We weren't seeing the engagement that we had in years past and with fewer staff. We put a pause on that, and we also paused our Pinterest. When we furloughed staff last year, that kind of went to the wayside. So my focus has been posting to Facebook and Instagram and really engaging with our audience and trying to get more likes and comments, that type of thing. So, and that's all done organically, not a lot of paid for that part of it, but our content activation, we did invest a little over $11,000. Our Google Analytics, our users have, are up 30% over last year, which is fantastic, because we did do more blogs last year and drove, we're trying to drive more traffic, so a 30% increase on that is really, I'm very happy with that. Our new users are up 32%. Our returning users are up 19%. And our overall sessions are up over 30%. So I was really excited to share that information with you. Our board doesn't even know it yet. So, moving forward in 2022 with our marketing initiatives, again, we're really going to focus on the storytelling, and we do that through our website, burnsvillemn.com. We have three separate newsletters that we are, that we introduced in 2021. We have a leisure newsletter. We continue to do that six times a year. And this year, we introduced a local newsletter that we do six times a year, as well as a quarterly newsletter to our partners on how they can engage with us and the industry. We'll continue with our lead generation campaign, that is to build our active subscribers to our newsletter, and also with our social media and community management. That's our social media, our Facebook, Instagram, Pinterest. And then we'll do, continue with our advertising. We're going to add in some native content ad distribution, and then also ramp up our Pinterest page again, because that's really storytelling, so that's right in our wheelhouse. We will continue to update our blogs on our website and create new blogs that will be promoted through content activation, through our locally strong blog program, as well as summer and winter campaigns. And then we're going to, this year, our, in 2022, I should say, do a four-video series on "We Defy Boredom." I don't know if that's going to be the name that sticks, but really, you know, to get out and explore and be active seasonally here in the Burnsville area. We've been fortunate that we have worked with great photographers and videographers, so we're going to continue to really build those assets, so we can share that with all of our partners. And then continue with our monthly dashboard report that you all should be receiving from us on a monthly basis, and continue with partner webinars. Those are webinars that we do in partnership with the Chamber of Commerce with 26 Digital, where they share social media strategies and digital strategies with our partners. And then a lot of my time, or some of my time next year, I really want to be able to focus on re-engaging those travel bloggers and influencers, those foodie people. I was able to do a little bit this year, earlier this year, with some of our videos, but bringing 26 Digital on board to help manage our social channels and our community engagement will help free up some of my time, so I'm able to work with some of those influencers. So I'm really excited about that. Here is just a quick snapshot of our content calendar for 2022. It's a working document, so it changes depending on what opportunities or what new events are created. So this is, was, continue to update that, but just wanted to give you a snapshot of what we will be working on next year. And then we'll continue with our geographic audience. When we were here last year around this time, we were focusing on the 250-mile radius with the hopes to expand out to the 500-mile radius, hoping that the pandemic would calm down a bit. So we are pausing a little, and we're going to go into 2022 focusing again on the 250-mile radius, hoping to get that back up to pre-pandemic levels. Our budget. We began budgeting with our executive committee this summer and presented a draft budget to our Board of Directors in late September, which they adopted in 20, or, I'm sorry, in early November of this year. And we're cautious in forecasting due to the pandemic and due to staffing with a lot of our hospitality and tourism businesses. So we did approach this cautiously. We want to continue to be nimble and flexible. That's something that we've done for many, many years, and I think that's really important because of the way that we are funded. And we're really poised to accelerate and re-engage visitors when they are willing and wanting to travel. So we'll really keep our finger on the pulse of that. And then we want to include our partners in engaging them. The more information that we have from our partners, the more we can help promote them, the more visitors we can attract. And again, a lot of the execution will be done with 26 Digital. And two other staff members will be visiting Burnsville for about two and a half days in January. So I'll be touring them around so that they can experience Burnsville. So I'm really excited to have them here. And then, I already covered that, our budget was approved by our Board of Directors. Our funds come primarily from local option lodging tax. That's a tax that overnight guests pay at our hotel motels, and that's through Minnesota State statute 469.190. I do always seek out and apply for grants through Explore Minnesota Tourism, and we've secured one grant for 2022, and I've submitted one application, and still am waiting to hear back from that, so that would be very helpful. And we're going to, in 2022, invest some of our savings into our marketing plan and our initiatives. And the funds will again be used for marketing campaigns, promotions. We really want to inspire travel, inspire travel to Burnsville and maintain our organizational capacity. And with that, I will stand for questions.
Councilmember Keely?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Question, how did you end up hooking up with 26 Digital? They're out of Michigan, I noticed. Are they sort of a frequent player in the CBB space?
Yep, they focus on hospitality and tourism, and one of their senior marketing directors or senior vice president, I'm not sure what his title is, Brian, he did work for the Fargo Convention and Visitors Bureau. So we started around the same time, and I would see him at travel tourism conferences, became friends, and then when he moved to 26 Digital, just was very curious about what they were doing, and then were able to engage with them and then bring them on board to help assist us. And so our partnership, the mayor was on our board at that time, and so she's seen our relationship grow over the years, and it's been very successful for Burnsville. We've, I'm always constantly learning from them.
Sure.
I was very impressed with what they present and the reporting that they give and how they do all of their work. It was very well done.
Good. There's a, I just want to, when you evaluate your vendor contracts, there's a new digital agency that moved to Burnsville from Prior Lake, and the owner lives in maybe New Ulm on Hobby Farm, but very impressed with the agency. And so I'll pass on the name just to keep in the back of your rolodex if you're ever looking for going more local than Michigan.
Yep.
With the digital agency, I was very impressed with what they brought.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, any questions on the budget that was in the background? And it was approved and adopted by her board, so may I have a motion to approve and adopt the marketing plan and budget?
I have a motion to approve. I hope you get your staff back.
I will second and also say this is the type of presentation that I've been looking for. So thank you on that.
Oh, thank you. Yeah. Amy does a very good job of putting background materials together, and so, thank you very much. So there's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. And the motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Wishing you all a successful year next year.
Thank you.
But...
Appreciate that.
Well, you know...
Convention's coming back.
Yeah.
Business hotels filling up.
Yeah.
That's what we need.
And they, and they all got some money. It's now getting people into the property. That's, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is the resolution to approve the national settlement for prescription opioid litigation and state subdivision agreements. And presenting this evening is City Manager Lee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. I will share this responsibility with our attorney, Jared Shepherd, here as well. But this item was continued from the December 7th council meeting. There are a couple of questions about the, what the agreement entails and what it would obligate the council to do by signing on to it. So I've just had a couple of quick notes as a highlight summary, and then happy to answer any specific questions. As you know, this, these lawsuits allege that the pharmaceutical industry is promoting opioid use for non-cancer-related acute and chronic pain, and it's really grown at unprecedented rates. There is, there are two nationwide settlements that are in the queue right now, intended to resolve all litigation. And as part of the... And um, as part of the action before you tonight is signing on to uh, these lawsuits where there would be a financial allocation. That would come to, Burnsville would be eligible for as a result of participating in the lawsuit. With that, um, I know there are some questions about what the funds may be used for or how the in- the intent. Within the council's packet, Exhibit A lists some possible remediation uses that have been identified. It's not exhaustive, of course, that can evolve as um, as new information um, is, is learned and, and uh, is available. So, but the broad categories are treatment, prevention, and kind of an other category that talks about first responders, uh, collaboration, coordination, um, research, training, those kinds of things. Earlier this evening, I forwarded you kind of last minute some statistics about um, Burnsville's, you know, kind of Burnsville specific data related to opioids and how our first responders have, responders have seen those calls increase over the years. So I'm happy to answer any questions about that which I sent out or about the agreement um, as a whole.
Any questions? Or Mr. Shepherd, is there anything that you want to um, elaborate on with regard to this? And why it's important for us to um, to sign on?
Sure, Madam Mayor. Um, I, I think since the last meeting, you know, we had more information in front of the council. The last meeting, we had this on in front of the council, right on the heels of um, the signers table, which was a, a, a working group of the AG's office and local government litigating entities, the League of Minnesota City, the Association of, of Minnesota Counties. It all come together to talk about how the um, the settlement funds would be used within the state. And that's reflected in the state subdivision agreement that is in, in your packet and, and you're being asked to approve tonight. Um, that's also referred to as the M O A. So that, that really talks about what will happen when that money comes into Minnesota. Um, so I, I don't believe you had that in front of you at the last meeting. One thing to point out in that, that M O A, I think that's useful is that it really talks about collaboration between local governments with respect to the money. Again, the Exhibit A is the universe, I mean, they're very kind of broad categories, but it is the universe of um, abatement efforts that the money can be used for. And that was created by a panel of public health experts that the AG's office also uh, assembled in order to, to figure out how best to use the money. But um, counties and cities can work together to communicate to how best to use the money um, within their jurisdictions. And I think that's a really important piece of that subdivision agreement.
Yeah, I had um, I wanted to understand how uh, we are seeing um, activities in this area. So I had reached out to both the chiefs uh, to give us some local data. And Melanie sent that out to all of you so that you see what Burnsville P D and Burnsville Fire paramedics deal with on an ongoing basis. So um, and our chiefs also talked about the uh, partnership with our Dakota County Drug Task Force. And so, you know, this is something where we can take a look and um, because uh, we are expending um, a lot of financial and um, uh, human resource uh, in this crisis. So we're experiencing it here in Burnsville as well, so. Councilmember Schultz.
Before I really delve into this, I do want to make sure that my other city council members, if they have questions, they can um, get those questions answered. And then I will reserve my time back to speak on this.
Any thoughts? For me, it, you know, to opt in allows us to um, to be part of the process. It doesn't cost us anything. Councilmember Workman.
Just a couple of observations that I made from the background. If we were to sign on to this, we waive our right to do anything in the future. I can't find that word, said it a little bit more eloquently than I just did. So we're waiving our right um, for any future litigation, at least with this specific entity. I see there were other lawsuits with other distributors and manufacturers that Attorney General's Office. I, I don't know if they went at it alone, um, specifically with McKinsey. I think there was a McKesson, uh, an eight million dollar settlement there. So these are kind of all over the place. This seems to be one that's taken various manufacturers and companies and, and put them all into one class action. When I looked at the math and read the background, it says that if we were to maximize um, the allocation in the state, Burnsville could receive as much as one point one million funded over eighteen years, which works out to be about sixty-one thousand dollars a year for eighteen years. Local government units would be awarded about six point seven four percent to cities. And I found it, and maybe not funny, but interesting that um, attorneys were going to receive up to seven percent. So the attorneys are actually getting more than the um, cities that were impacted. So shame on you, Jared. I, that wasn't, that wasn't called for, I'm sorry.
No, it's. I can, I can actually explain a little bit more about how the attorney fees work if it's useful to the council.
Yeah, I welcome it, absolutely.
So um, you know, as, as the council may know, um, the, this litigation occurred because it's sort of unprecedented and almost a reaction to the tobacco litigation where um, none of that money seemed to trickle down and, and help remediate the problem that, that people were seeing locally. So um, local governments as, as, as small as two thousand cities, uh, two thousand population up to, you know, you know, much bigger cities like Minneapolis and St. Paul, Duluth and Rochester. And full disclosure, I do, I am local counsel for several of those cities. They, they decided that this was their fight and they filed lawsuits in federal court. Those were all shuffled over to uh, the multi-district litigation in Ohio and they're overseed. Um, so this isn't actually a class action, I mean, it kind of operates that way. But it's sort of this unprecedented uh, settlement agreement driven through the AG's offices. Just a way to get all the local governments in line and sort of buy global peace. So kind of going back to the settlement, or the, the attorney's fees issue, you know, typical contingency fee arrangement is a thirty-three and a third to an attorney who, you know, um, spends all the money to get that um, plaintiff through litigation. In this case, the, the um, Judge Polster in the M D L issued an order about nine months ago and said that the, he's capping attorney's fees, so, so the presumptive number was fifteen percent. Anything above fifteen percent is unreasonable, given what we're dealing with here, the numbers, et cetera. As part of this nationwide settlement, there is a, a settlement pool that attorneys are uh, supposed to apply for. So it's, it's, it's carved out from the money that is going to come to Minnesota. That being said, people have kind of crunched the numbers and, and the, the money that's available will, may not be able to get those attorneys to that fifteen percent number. So the, the backstop fund that's being created out of the local government share is, is seven percent of the entire L G U share. Um, and that is to, if the attorneys can't get to that seven percent, then they apply to the backstop fund. The way it works, of course, is in all of the cities like Burnsville that, that weren't litigating are kind of paying a little bit of that um, by virtue of the way the settlement is set up. But, so it is, it is more modest than the typical contingency fee agreement, but yes, there is attorney's fees um, getting paid.
Yeah, so, and we're not spending any money in, in this litigation, the city isn't.
No, other than in the grand scheme of things, you know, the, the settlement agreement.
So that's why if we do something different, we would be paying for that suit.
That's correct.
Whereas this one, we're part of a group of um, cities and counties throughout the, the nation.
That's right, and no, no attorney's fees are coming off the top of the amount that Burnsville will get, yep.
And, and Jared, I, attorneys deserve to be paid for what they do, so I, I was just having.
This is poking, yes.
Yeah, as an insurance agent, I think I'm allowed to poke a lawyer.
It's fine, and it, 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 it's a good question, it's a good question for the council to have.
Except you're not wearing your insurance hat.
You know, my questions, when we discussed this last time, had more to do with what are going to be the actual impacts on the infrastructure and the system in which this medicine is distributed um, to the people that need it. Um, and, and I really appreciate this very thorough background. But it doesn't quite get to that question of are we unintentionally supporting a system that makes it harder for people to get the medicine that they need um, by signing on to this? Understanding that this is a, a suit to, to address things that have already happened. But, you know, with this money, then moving forward, we're in more or less granting the Attorney General's Office to create or modify programs that would, you know, at one point in here says to reduce the number of prescriptions that are written. You know, that could be a positive or negative, just depending on where you are and what your needs are. So I'm, I'm still just those are where I, I, I don't have a firm stance on this. And I, I would like to hear what Councilmember Schultz has to say more than anything, as she, I think, has the most education on this topic.
Let me ask Mr. Shepherd, Mr. Shepherd, this doesn't preclude the um, physicians prescribing for those patients who need pain medication?
Uh, no, it does not, Madam Mayor. It, there are, you know, the nationwide settlement does have injunctive relief provisions built into it to, designed to uh, frankly tighten up the system so that in areas where, where, where these were over, over prescribed, that, that, and the FDA and DEA laws that were, you know, not being followed in, in the right way are, are fixed. But in terms of cutting off the, the prescription of opioids entirely, that's, that's not a function of this settlement.
Yep, and I think that's, okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Keeley.
One of the net, things that I noted in our background is, the city of Burnsville is not in the business of, of the types of social programming that our county is. And it is noted that uh, to participate in this, if we were to get the money, that we could turn it over to our county. And they really are the ones that provide um, these types of social services. But uh, I would agree with uh, Councilmember Workman that the, the expert in this space is, is Councilmember Schultz. So I'm really interested in hearing, um, now that we deferred this to this meeting, you know, what, what information that she has to share uh, for us to consider as well. But it's, my, my first issue was the principle behind the suit. And, and that's been a struggle. I get, uh, it's, it's almost like the momentum when these things take off. And um, they, they tend to be like a giant vacuum and they, they pull a lot of things in that, that aren't even part of it and or maybe issues that aren't part of it. And they cause problems with doctors feeling um, anxious about providing a much-needed uh, pain relief for a patient because they're on guard uh, because of these types of lawsuits. So there's, I think there's, there's a lot of facets to this that make it uncomfortable. And this isn't something that we normally take up at the city level uh, per se. So it's very, it's a very unusual circumstance for us to be dealing with a, a decision like this. But um, is, are, is Dakota County involved in this?
Um, Mr. Jared.
Did they vote to?
Mr. Shepherd?
Participate?
Yeah, I believe Dakota County is a litigant.
And did they already pass their?
I, I don't know for sure, I, I assume that they have. Um, I know that uh, the county association, the league and the AG's office are kind of monitoring these things. And um, I'm, I think most of the counties have, have approved at this point.
And we don't have to take a look at what uh, how we're going to be using the funds. But I also, when I look at uh, what our police and fire are doing and how much the financial resources that can help with some of the expenditures that they have. But Councilmember Schultz.
So, this is a topic area um, that I've, I've spent considerable years working in and advocating in. And this is also an area that I've spoke in front of the um, Minnesota Legislature several times on, in, in community groups um, and across the country. I, I think one of the first things for us to understand is addiction itself and where, where addiction comes from. When we, when we look at studies, and this was in Scientific American, and this was a study that was, that was done back in May two thousand sixteen, but it's not like the basics of addiction has changed. Ninety percent of all addictions, no matter what drug, started in adolescence or very young adulthood. Typically, it starts with alcohol, that is the first addiction. They may move on to another drug, but it starts with alcohol. And it is almost always directly traced back to untreated childhood trauma. And I'm not talking about junior high sucked, because it sucks for everyone. But there's an identifiable trauma that they sustained. And because we have this cultural idea that we just say children are resilient, um, it doesn't get treated. And then they start to treat themselves. So that is, that is the first part of this, is if we want to fight addiction, that's where you go. When we look at the studies of, okay, well, what about when people are prescribed, prescribed opioids? You know, what is the addiction rate for that? There are many, 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 many studies on this as well. And I can recite them off, but the gold standard is the Cochrane Review. And they found that less than one percent of persons who are screened for a drug addiction problem first developed an addiction to long-term opioid use. And that is classified as opioids prescribed for longer than six months. Below that, it's even much lower. So as long as there's just any type of screening for a prior drug addiction, less than one percent. We also have insurance reviews, and we all know that insurance people are sharks for not wanting to spend money, right? They're all about crunching numbers and assessing risk and, and all of that kind of stuff. So they wanted to take a look, because many of them are paying out for addiction treatment, right? So they wanted to get a handle on this. Is it prescription? And no, it isn't. It isn't prescription drugs that, that are causing addictions in our country. And if we want to talk about law enforcement, Minnesota Bureau of Criminal Apprehension says that illegal fentanyl use is ninety-one percent of the opioid-related overdose deaths in Minnesota. It's illegal synthetic fentanyl. So whenever we look at studies that talk about opioids and they talk about opioids, they do not separate out illegal fentanyl. They throw them into that classification and then it looks like it's prescription drugs. So why did this even happen? Why did this narrative start? It started because very well-meaning and hard-working people who are trying to advocate for people to be properly treated for drug addictions realized that when they were talking to other people about the needed help for people to overcome addiction. to other people about the needed help for people to overcome addiction, people were like, "The junkies, man, let them die," which is callous and cold. But then they found out, if they talked about the housewife, the wonderful mother who was in a car accident and then was prescribed opioids and whoops, became addicted, there was an outpouring of sympathy and empathy, and people actually cared. They thought that life was worth saving. And so that's the narrative that got highlighted. And I do not fault them for that, because they are trying to save lives. And they're trying to advocate for people that most other people see as garbage, which is an awful thing on us, not on them. So when I look at these lawsuits, they couldn't go after junkies. They couldn't go after drug dealers. But they did know who had the deep pockets. And that's why they were looking at going after pharma, because they had money and they could pay. And we do have an addiction problem. We do have that illegal fentanyl problem. We do have that problem with untreated childhood trauma. And we do need to help take care of that. So, I mean, I understand that. But what has happened through this narrative and through these lawsuits and through the tightening up, and then this lawsuit talking about the continued tightening up of prescribing medication to people who need it, is, it is happening, that people who need it aren't getting it. And it may be unattended, but it is happening. And in Minnesota, we have limits that politicians have placed on doctors, when they can prescribe, the dosage amount, how long. So they are violating the gold standard of medical care, which is individualized medical care that is between a doctor and a patient. But they want to look like they're doing something. They won't be champs. And they're hurting people by doing that. People who should be receiving pain medication to function, and I don't mean they need to function because they're addicted to it. They need to function because they are in agonizing levels of pain that are not going to get better. I mean, if any of you have had surgery or broken a arm or anything like that, it's awful, but you get through it. These people will never get through it. Their pain is never going to get better. And what we're telling them now is we're telling them they have to do pain acceptance. You don't get your pain taken care of or treated. You have to just accept it. You should do yoga. Have you ever thought of distracting yourself? This is what people in Minnesota are facing right now. And they feel they can't speak out about it, because people will call them junkies and look down on them. I also personally know people who have died from an overdose, because they could no longer get their pain medication. And one of them was an elderly gentleman who didn't even really drink or anything like that. And yet, he died of a heroin overdose, because he couldn't take the pain, but killing yourself is a sin. So instead, we had someone in their 80s going out and scoring heroin, because that solves the problem. In my cancer support groups, we've seen it tighten up so much, and we kept being told it won't affect you. It is. It is 100% affecting cancer patients, 100%. Cancer patients used to, a few years ago, as this was tightening down, pool their drugs to mail each other, to help each other get through. Now they're using the book Final Exit and pooling drugs to mail so that people have a painless way to self-euthanize. And these are people I know. So sometimes, and I understand, and let me also make this really clear, I would not demonize anyone for signing on to this or accepting this money. If council wants to vote to accept this money, I do not hold them in bad regard whatsoever. I do not. But for me personally, I cannot sign on to this, because even if you use the money for something good, sometimes there's money that's just so tainted in human misery that you can't take it. And I cannot accept this money. I will vote no.
Are you ready to make a motion?
I walked in here tonight, kind of prepared not to support this item, and I probably pushed further that direction after hearing Councilmember Schultz. So I won't make a motion for this item. I would move to not.
Adopt the resolution?
Correct.
Okay. Councilmember Keely.
I'm not going to second that, yet. I will say $60,000 a year over 18 years doesn't mean anything to me as far as our budget. We have a $100 million organization, and the information that Councilmember Schultz shared is very compelling. And this is one of those things that if you don't really scratch through the surface that deep, it's pretty easy just to say, okay, fine, we'll just join. But thankfully, we have someone who is extremely well-spoken and has spent years researching and studying this. And I think we're making a conscious choice to do the right thing and not participate in it. So that, I will second Councilmember Workman's motion to not approve joining this legal.
Okay. So when I look at this, I'm looking at it, and Councilmember Schultz, I thank you so much for sharing your knowledge and your experience over the years with this particular subject. And as I listened to you, I was thinking, so how do we solve the issue of youth mental health that drives them into? Because when I was practicing psychology and was a psychotherapist, I used to see a lot of young people with these issues. The thing is, only until recently, insurance companies did not fund mental health in a robust way. So that's part of the system. So the thing is, when there are companies that need to be held accountable, and I'm not, because I'm a two-time cancer survivor, and my husband died of cancer, and I know what pain meds can do to help. I'm one of the people who chose not to, but I was over-subscribed with oxycodone, but didn't use it because I just didn't want to. And we all have different pain thresholds, and so that's not the issue. The issue is, if we're going to help cure this issue, it starts in the families, it starts in mental health. And then I would say that insurance companies, and I think that one of the things that we do well here at the city of Burnsville is that we have a benefits package that addresses mental health. And so that's one of the things. But boy, we need to address this issue. So I was going to vote in favor of this, because, and it's not about how we use the money, but how do we talk about this? And then if there is funds that come out of this, then how do we hold these companies accountable when there is a crisis with over-prescription? And how these youths, these young people, get their hands on prescription drugs or else purchasing it on the street and then dying? And we've had some of those. So what we do have is a motion to deny the adoption of the resolution, and there is a second. And if the clerk can just take the roll call on this, please.
Sure. Councilmember Keely.
Well, we're, yes, in favor of turning it down.
To deny adoption of, yeah.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Councilmember Workman?
Yes.
Madam Mayor?
No. Okay. And the clerk has the division of the House.
Yes.
Thank you very much. I think this is very good, and I thank Councilmember Schultz for sharing her knowledge, her experience, and I thank her for her advocacy role at the legislature. And I suppose, I think you said that you have also spoke nationally on this subject. So thank you. But I think, as I listen to you, we need to address this issue. And we need to address it in a way that gets at families and youth, because it starts in the system within a family, and sometimes the denial of parents to acknowledge what is going on or to ignore what is going on with their children. So this needs to be the place where we start to help get at all of this. Councilmember Workman?
And I would echo that, but along with that, again, this is kind of foreign territory for us. In an article in October, our Deputy Attorney General, United States Attorney General, made a statement saying that the vast majority of the lethal chemicals are believed to come from China before they're mass-produced into fentanyl pills in Mexico and then brought over the border by Mexican cartels. So much of an issue that she met with Mexico's Attorney General. This is a multifaceted problem. The pills are marketed on social media platforms, Facebook Marketplace, Snapchat, and paid with cryptocurrency and cash. So this isn't a direct line. This is a monster. But I think one of the best things we could do is try to get a hold on what's coming over our border. And it feels weird saying that in these chambers, but I don't think it's a secret that the really nasty stuff that's killing people is coming over here from Mexico.
Well, you know, it's a multifaceted issue. It's not just one, and it's not just one country, and it's, and when it's, so the thing is, I just want to make sure that we're looking at the systemic piece around this. And so we need to address it. But we have the division of the House, and we have a resolution, and we will not be supporting the resolution to participate in a national prescription opioid settlement. And with that...
Motion to adjourn?
Councilmember Keely makes the motion.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Workman. And so, thank you for joining us this evening, wishing everyone a Merry Christmas and happy holidays, and we'll see you all in a new year. Happy New Year as well.
Were you calling a vote on that motion? In second?
Yes, because I just wanted to make sure. I put that in, because once we get the motion, everybody leaves. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. And the motion carries. Good night, and thank you for being with us.